We turn now to LGBT Heritage Month in Los Angeles, where City Hall leaders honor exemplary LGBT citizens from each council district. Gil Reyes has more.
City Hall erupted in song in celebration of LGBT Heritage Month. The Unity Fellowship Church Choir performed. Their openly gay Archbishop Carl Bean could not attend, but was among the honorees.
A diverse collection of who Los Angeles is and who Los Angeles is at its best.
The L.A. City Council honored LGBT movers and shakers like Lori Jean. Jean is the CEO of the Los Angeles LGBT Center, a safe haven for youth and seniors.
Many of you have been champions of our community in our quest to build a world where LGBT people thrive as healthy, equal, and complete members of society. On behalf of our Board of Directors, our staff, our volunteers, and most of all, our clients, thank you so much for this wonderful honor.
Also recognized, actor Bex Taylor-Klaus. The actor is helping gender non-binary people gain acceptance.
My hope for the next generation of queer folk is that they live their lives as authentically as possible.
Outside City Hall, each city council office recognized an outstanding LGBT person in their district. Honoree Steven Simon is Executive Director of the city's Department on Disability.
Look, I'm just thankful that for a lot of my career, I was able to get a paycheck to do the work I love, which is fighting for community. I'm so honored to be among the honorees today and among all of you.
From honorees to exhibits, this one at L.A. City Hall's Bridge Gallery dispels the myth that the LGBTQ+ flag is just one rainbow flag. In fact, there are several of them, 23 just in this gallery. Openly gay council member Mitch O'Farrell presented his True Colors exhibit. Here's a Pansexual Pride Flag. Pansexuals are attracted to people regardless of the person's sex or gender identity. And check out the Gender Fluid Pride Flag. Gender fluid people remain flexible about their identity.
Even most of us in the LGBT community don't realize the breadth that exists of representation and identity. Identity is so important. You know, if someone doesn't see themselves represented somewhere in mainstream society, they feel isolated and alone.
We are proud of the many people who made sacrifices for the progress that we have achieved today. We're proud of this great city that we live in, but we are also very committed to continuing to advance LGBTQ rights, and not until everybody has them can we rest.
Thanks, Gil. You can check out all 23 Pride Flags at the City Hall Bridge Gallery through the end of June. You didn't think we'd only cover one Pride event, did you? Let's check out the inaugural Pride on the Port in San Pedro.
Happy Pride!
Welcome, come on, enjoy it!
It's the first Pride on the Port of Los Angeles, so being a part of anything in a community that's the first time is monumental. And San Pedro's ready for it. They need a celebration like this.
It's important to have the inaugural Pride on the Port here in San Pedro to make sure people feel that they are welcome regardless of how they love, how they pray, what they look like. Clearly, we are a city that welcomes everyone.
Well, this brings the community together, and it also really shows that we have progressed as a city. There's still a long way to go, but we are moving in that direction. And being the first out LGBTQ citywide official, I am thrilled.
By coming together, by being proud, and by doing it with purpose, we are going to change the world.
There is never going to be a perfect world, but we have a job to always make the world a better one, step by step by step.
And we owe it to all of those 13 countries in the world where being gay gets you the death penalty.
In a time where still the LGBTQ+ community is being threatened, we're saying here in San Pedro along the port, you are welcome, your love, we're here to celebrate you.
It's been an inspiration to change the difference in the community, and here we are enjoying ourselves.
This is the place to be, for sure, and I'm sure this will be the place to be next year.
The city also sponsored a Pride event in South LA hosted by council members Herb Wesson and Marquise Harris-Dawson. Anna Marcos takes us to the block party where everyone was welcomed with open arms.
And there's bubbles too! The Our Pride South LA event celebrates its third annual party. And although it focuses on the LGBTQ and trans community, organizers say everybody's welcome.
The colors are everywhere, and what's not to like? Kids of every age are drawn to the rainbow hues.
I identify as a gender queer, non-binary person, meaning that I don't identify with either sex. I'm gender fluid.
Who they are is not only okay and acceptable, but it's something to be celebrated.
We live in this community, and I'm so happy they're doing something to support everyone and all of us.
The party and the people at this annual Pride Party in Baldwin Hills are homegrown, but the event is sponsored by city leaders Marquise Harris-Dawson and Herb Wesson.
Today, I want to have fun and just hang out with a lot of people that I know and love, and we're gonna have a good time tonight.
It's important for the LGBTQ community in South LA, in the African-American community, to be out, to be proud, and to be in a space where we can all embrace them.
Visibility is very important.
And while fun and rainbows abound, the tables and booths highlight the many serious issues that face the trans and LGBTQ communities. They provide resources and information.
We're the only think tank, national think tank focused on ending the HIV epidemic in Black communities.
I'm from Zimbabwe. For me, being a trans woman of color, coming from a country where I was not able to be myself, being here in a group, being able to help other people who want to my situation, it's important to me.
If we just take the time to care just a little bit and point a kid or a youth in the right direction, it can change everything.
This diverse community keeps diversifying with ever more gender fluid trans and more families and children becoming a part of it.
There's a place for people of color and families of color and gay families and our little gabies to go and celebrate pride with each other. It's really lovely.
Happy Pride!
I know that being both Black, gay male parents, that we can successfully raise a great kid like this.
Happy Pride, everybody!
Volunteer teachers from Thailand are honored. Dash buses get some extended hours, and Chevy Chase rec goes green with new trees. All this in City Beat.
Councilmember Paul Krikorian hosted a very special presentation honoring Wat Thai, the first Thai Buddhist temple in the United States, in the city with the largest Thai population outside of Thailand. Wat Thai has been sponsoring volunteer teachers to visit Los Angeles and share the beautiful culture of Thailand to students at the facility.
It's a very special place because it is a place where their culture is preserved, where their language is preserved.
The L.A. Department of Transportation has a few new reasons to take public transportation and leave the car at home, as the Dash Downtown will now provide extended service until 9:00 PM on weekdays, weekend service on neighborhood and downtown routes, and earlier weekday service on neighborhood routes. But that's not all, as commuter express is also getting extended service and will accommodate residents of Playa Vista and El Segundo with the Route 437B and Route 439 lines respectively. For more information, visit ladot.lacity.org. Chevy Chase Recreation Center in Atwater Village saw the planting of 19 new trees thanks to councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, the Department of Rec and Parks, and community members. The new Greenway will give the park a new look as summer kicks off.
We're going to plant 19 trees as the first phase of our tree planting, both in the park and in the perimeter, and then we're going to install lighting.
Bread, it's a beautiful thing, right? Carb lovers, you gotta check this out. We take you to the Fifth Annual Bread Festival at the Grand Central Market. You're welcome.
This is the Fifth Annual Los Angeles Bread Festival at Grand Central Market. This is the first year that we're holding the market in the brand-new lower-level event space. We have over 13 vendors from all over the Southern California area. We've got breads, spreads, pastries, jams, anything you can think of, we've got it here today. We really like these kinds of markets. They allow us to talk to people on a really natural, just, you know, candid level about our business.
It's great because, you know, it gives the opportunity to show a variety of different themes that we don't know, and we're going to learn about. We just go to the store and buy packaged breads all the time, and we just don't know really about it, and this is the opportunity to show what entails.
I came to try out new things, like the bread here. I tried out the jelly over there, it's really good.
Come down to Grand Central Market today, get yourself some bread! Get ready to dance under the stars with Dance Downtown L.A., Classic Cars Kick Off Independence Day, and summer's officially here with the California Watermelon Festival. Check these out and things to do.
Dance DTLA returns for its 15th season. Downtown is the place to be on Friday nights from June 21st through August 30th. Each Friday night features a different dance genre and beginner dance lessons led by top L.A. dance instructors. So step outside, get your groove on, show off your dance moves at Dance DTLA, happening every Friday now through August. For a listing of music genre lineups and event locations, visit musiccenter.org/tickets. The Port of Los Angeles will host Cars and Stripes Forever, a free community celebration to kick off Independence Day weekend, featuring a classic car show. Check out motorcycles, exotic vehicles, and more than 100 cars built before 1975. Throw in live bands, food trucks, and fireworks to round out the perfect July 4th celebration. Cars and Stripes Forever rolls in on Friday, June 28th, beginning at 5:00 PM at the Vincent Thomas Bridge in San Pedro. For more information, visit la waterfront.org. You are invited to a fun-filled day at the California Watermelon Festival. This year's festival boasts their largest event yet with over 60,000 pounds of fresh off-the-farm fruit, chilled, sliced, and served up fresh to you. Tickets also include a wildlife exhibit, butterfly feeding, and more. Don't miss the California Watermelon Festival, happening June 29th and 30th at Hanson Dam Soccer Complex. The complex is located at 11480 Foothill Boulevard and begins at 10:00 AM. For more information, check out their listing on Eventbrite. And that's a look at some things to do.
That's it for this edition. I'm Umeema Rashidi. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more at L.A. This Week.
Good morning, good morning. If everyone would please take a seat. I want to welcome you. Shhh. Want to welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Herastas, and Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell Price, Rodriguez, Rue Smith-Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. Rodriguez seconds. Next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Corretts moves. And Blumenfeld seconds. Next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Why don't we all rise for the salute of our flag? We'll be led today by Mr. Mike Bonin. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. President. If everybody could please join me in placing their hands over their heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Madam Clerk, can we move through the agenda at this time?
Yes, Mr. President. There is a request to continue items eighteen and twenty-three to tomorrow, June twenty-sixth.
So ordered.
And items eight and thirty-nine to Tuesday, July second.
So ordered as well. Continue.
Items one through three are items noted for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all three items.
Then why don't we move forward? We'll hold those items and move forward.
Items four through thirty-five are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Mr. Rue?
Could I have thirty-three on special?
Let's hold thirty-three at Mr. Rue's request. Mr. Corretts.
So that thirty-four be pulled as special?
We'll hold that as well. Mr. Bonin, that satisfies you. So let's hold those two items. Let us prepare to vote. Did you need to say something, Madam Clerk? Okay, let us prepare to vote on the remaining items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue. Yes, Mr. Bonin.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask that we send item twenty-five urgent forthwith.
Okay, so let's first vote on urgent forthwith request. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. So, continue.
And, Mr. President, the ordinances for items six and seven will be held over one week to July second unless reconsidered with twelve members present.
All right. If we get twelve today, please remind me and we'll take care of it. Continue.
Items thirty-six through fifty-three are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
There are cards on items thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty, forty-four, and forty-five.
Okay, let's hold those items and then we'll vote on the remaining items. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
And, Mr. President, there is a request.
A request?
I apologize. There is a request to send item forty forthwith, but that item has been called special for cards.
All right.
So that then takes council back to presentations.
Okay, we're, let's, Sean Murphy, let's bring Sean up. Sergeants, could you remove the work, the rope at center? Sean, just wait a minute. You have items one, two, three, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and your public comment. Go ahead.
Item one. Item one, I'm for. Item two, I'm for. Item three, I'm for. General public comment.
Give him his one minute for general public comment.
Uh, yeah. Uh, I'd like you to adjourn the meeting this afternoon or whenever for Mr. Cunningham. He won a mortuary in Los Angeles. Uh, he passed away at Sunday at 3:00 a.m. He was a good guy. Mr. Dick Cunningham and O'Connor. I'm sure David Rue will get the information. I was his neighbor at Cochrane. He was a good man. Please adjourn the meeting, Mr. Dick Cunningham and O'Connor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to Ms. McAllister. Are you here? There she is. You have items forty, forty-four, forty-five, and general public comment. Go ahead. Welcome. Good to see you.
Good morning, Mr. President. Good to see you. Uh, we have here where we're hiring more outside city attorneys to do work, to do work on the aviation. We have nearly six hundred attorneys, and I went through the bar association, and a lot of them are not even attorneys. Never heard of them. So we got a lot of ghost employees, and we're still spending millions in the attorney's office, and we need a federal investigation here. That money is going in a lot of folks' pockets and not the people of this city. Uh, let's see. Here we have Rue wants over $432,000 for a kitchen in the senior career town. We need housing, okay? They have a kitchen, but you want to take $432,000 and put it on a kitchen in Rue's district. Most of them are probably illegal aliens anyway. Based on the media, the second largest illegal alien population in Los Angeles are the Asians. Uh, here, I want to talk about, you want to give, see, all this money is floating around. We have people laying on the street dying every year. Hundred sixty thousand dollars to the planning and land management for unique technical services and legal workload demand. Well, I looked this up. I don't know what this is. This is so vague. Unique technical services and legal workload demand? Come on now, get, be more specific. Where is this $400,000 going? See, I see a lot of money being embezzled, and nobody's doing anything while we're, uh, people are laying on the street all over the city. Over eight hundred are dying a year. You cannot live on the street year after year and not come down with different diseases and illnesses. So we have a problem here in this city, and we're about to fix it very soon by recalling the mayor of the City of Los Angeles. Uh, I want everybody to know that there is an active petition going around online, and if you're registered to vote, we want you to go to www recalledtheLAMayor.com.
Okay, thank you. Now you have your one minute.
Yes, go to www recalledtheLAMayor.com if you're registered to vote. We already have almost 50,000, and that's just online. We have people who are signing petitions out on the street. If you want to sign this petition, you must be a registered voter, so go and register to vote. We will get, we will get Garcetti out of office. Garcetti used to sit on this panel with these guys, so they're all hooked up together. We get him out and get somebody in there who's for the people, we will be much better off. Now, also, I just read this motion last week. We're running out of affordable housing. That means that those covenants that you have for no rent increases, they're disappearing, okay? Uh, Sadio wrote it up this week, this motion. You have done nothing. A lot of that affordable housing is being lost, and you have done a darn thing about it. We want you out of office, and not only are we going to get Garcetti out, we're going to get some of you guys out of office too. God bless you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Previn? As he's walking up, let's vote on items thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty, forty-four, and forty-five. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Previn, you have items one, two, three, and your general public comment.
I apologize. There's no agendas in the hall.
The floor is yours.
Yeah. Well, this is Friday's agenda, so I'm going to have to patch it together, but I'm ready, sir. Thank you for your interest. I was just up in the Ethics Commission where they're frying a city employee for violating the private advantage clause, which I thought was very interesting in light of all the violating that clause that happens down here at City Hall with council members, and yet nobody does a bloody thing. And this plumber is being pinned up by his toes as we speak. Uh, I pled for some leniency there. I was curious on item number two, sir, which is in Studio City in my district. It appears to be a vacation of city property right on the corner where Harvard-Westlake and has acquired the golf course. There's a fire department, but this is at Sunset, so it seems to be right across the street. It seems, um, we were, in my community, we're very up on stuff, but we had no idea about this, so that was a bit of a red flag. Uh, Krikorian doesn't seem to be here. I'm sure it's for good purpose, but I just want to call it out because whenever we have vacations of city property, of course, I'm reminded of the work of Corretts, but I meant Weezer, who doesn't seem to be present here, up in that public safety where he was pushing through a kind of a arm twisting on applicants for vacation of property. In that case, it was a case where there was a little spot in between two properties that the guy owned, and for years, the guy had his arm twisted and twisted and twisted till finally he threw his hands up in the air. Then the FBI investigation. I don't know if one thing has anything to do with the other, sir, because I'm just a routine kind of guy. Come down here when I can to talk about what's happening. And I will say that it does appear that we've got yet another liquor license. Now, sir, you know, I like a cocktail after a good, hard day's work like the next guy, but I feel that there's been an expansion. I feel like we've been rolling out a lot of these things without any kind of, um, we're not minding the store properly regarding Vision Zero and all of the atrocious road deaths that we've been having in my neighborhood. Now, we bumped the mileage from 35 miles an hour up to 40 in two spots where, I kid you not, the other day, and I'm not going to get emotional right now, but an older gentleman who survived the Holocaust, for God's sakes, was hit. You know, I mean, not on, to be fair, the 40 mile an hour uptick, but feet, just feet away from that very spot. I believe Magnolia and, so it's a heartbreaker, and I would ask you to think long and hard before you approve those things. Now, in terms of the Korean-American Museum, sir, nobody has a better relationship with them than you, and I know that we agreed originally they were going to put in some affordable housing. They've decided, too expensive. So it raises the question, well, wait, how does that do to the deal, Blumenfeld? I mean, if they promised the affordable housing back when we were clamoring for affordable housing, how is it that we're going to allow them off? Now, you may say, oh, we're not going to allow them off. We're going to, we're going to renegotiate. Look closely. I know, but what, how does that work? I mean, how can you get the deed to a county or city property, you know, make plans to do something, and then decide it's too expensive, we're going to do something we want to do?
Can we give him his one minute for general public?
Yeah, sure. Are you going to do that now? Fair enough. Okay, one minute for general public. I'm going to be real, real quick. I want to thank the city council for stepping up and looking at the activities of the airports with the law firm for $100,000. We appreciate it. We know that our neighbors are suffering in Studio City and right along the valley floor and up on the hill, and I live there, so I've noticed it. There's been an uptick in air traffic, and we need relief. So I know the FAA is not somebody you just sue willy-nilly, but it is somebody who you need to deal with forcefully. I just hope that we're not getting involved in yet another litigation. I know that the litigator, the council files today, or outside council deals are being reviewed again today, and wow, it is a robust amount of money we are feeding to all of little ducky law firms out there who are helping us with all of our egregious behavior. I would recommend, sir, that we start fixing some of that behavior rather than paying the litigators to fight like hell. It's killing us, sir. You know, now, I know everybody is pretending that we have the best budget in years.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, that concludes multiple comment for today. So at this point in time, I'd like to request, Ms. Martinez, would you, can we switch places? And while she's coming up, can we vote on items two and three? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Good morning, Madam President and members. Kind of stall in a minute as my group surrounds me here. I am proud to say that since 1975, the Wesson family has been a member of Kaiser Permanente. Three of my sons were born at Kaiser, two on Sunset, one of which I'm looking at right now, one Cadillac, Kaiser Cadillac. I'm looking at that one as well. Five and a half months ago, my youngest grandson was born at Sunset, so we are a Kaiser family. We have gone to Kaiser for everything from migraine headaches to mosquito bites. We've broken our share of bones, and if there is a record at Kaiser where it relates to getting stitches, I'm sure that the Wesson family is right up in the top ten. When people talk to me from all over, I rave about Kaiser because Kaiser always has made my family feel like a part of their family. That is just the way that they work from the top down. Mr. Corretts, you're, before I knew Paul, I met your lovely wife, and it was your wife who was then an employee at Kaiser that connected me with some of the, there's, Gail just walked in right now. Gail was responsible for introducing me to, I want to say, the first medical director that I met at Kaiser Cadillac, and it was Dr. Alexander. And he would visit me in Sacramento, and he had this young, aggressive, polite, great guy with him, and his name was Dr. Howard Fulman. He, the first day I met Howard, he gave me his personal cellphone number, and he told me that he did colonoscopies. And I said, oh, hell no, am I not going to use this number? Little did I know that Howard Fulman was going to wind up being one of the greatest friends that I would have in my adult life. And I can say without pause and hesitation that he is one of the greatest men that I have ever met, and I have met a lot. This man is committed to helping in any way that he can. He is the medical director at Kaiser Cadillac, and he runs a couple of other facilities, one of which is newly built on Martin Luther King Boulevard. He oversees a staff of approximately 450 physicians with 4,000 total employees, and I can tell you this, almost every one of those 4,000 employees knows who this man is, from the people that clean the joint to those that do surgery, because that's just the kind of person that he is. Having a friend that is the medical director for a medical facility that means so much not just to the city... just to the city, but to this region, but having a relationship with him where I can call him to say, you know, I have a constituent that's gonna be getting surgery, or she has to get some test run, and for him to go out of his way to meet that person, to reassure that person. You all know how funny we get when we walk into the hospital, even if we were sick when we got there, we're not sick anymore because we don't want, but it's just that kind of extra touch. And I would say that this man is beloved by the people that he works with. I could give you and tell you so many personal things that he's done for me, like, you know, it's gotta be weird to be a medical director, and then you have a friend who's not in medicine, and whenever Howard and I see each other, I say, Howard, is this anything right here? You know, but he's always been a good friend. He's always been there to give advice, but more importantly, the team, the team at Kaiser acts as if they were some kind of baseball or football or basketball team, where they all work together, and that's what makes them, in my opinion, the most effective medical group that I have ever had the pleasure to work with. And many of the physicians and staff from Kaiser are here today. Would we give them a big round of applause for the service that they provide? Now, there was a, I'm just gonna tell this one story. No, it's a good story. It has nothing to do with colonoscopies. Oh, my God. Anyway, there was a property located in the district that I represent that had been vacant for decades. Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas had a vision of revitalizing this area, and he worked real hard to clear it out so that we could put something unbelievably nice there for our community. But it's a struggle. Sometimes, in our part of town, it is challenging to bring in the types of businesses that you want. And we're joined today by Mark's wife, Avis. Let's give Avis Ridley Thomas a round of applause. But it was Mark's vision, and then after Mark, one of our colleagues, Bernard Parks. Bernard Parks worked day and night to try to figure out this puzzle so that we could develop this large property in our district. And then Mr. Parks left, and I became the councilman for that area. And Kaiser Permanente expressed an interest in building a first-class medical facility, one that would gear towards a lot of the conditions that people in that region had: obesity, high blood pressure, diabetes. And we worked and worked to try to make it happen. And I will say to you, it was probably the most challenging project that I've ever had to work on, but if it wasn't for the commitment of Howard Fulman and his staff, that facility would not be there today. He kept his directors at bay, telling them, just give him a little more time, I'll work this out somehow, I'll work this out. And ultimately, I think it was the day after Christmas, it was Howard and myself, other Kaiser staff, people that owned the property, and we met in my office the day after Christmas. I had people in three different rooms, and I'm running from one room, but after the end of several hours, we all shook hands, and now we're so proud to have this facility in our district. And members, every day when we come in here and we televise these proceedings, and you see my little segment, it is standing in front of this brand-new Kaiser facility. This good friend of mine is gonna be moving on to a different chapter in his life. It's because the only thing that I dislike about Kaiser is they have age limits, which I have a, I have a personal problem with, because my good friend Kurt over here, who's gonna be moving up the ladder to try to fill Howard's shoes, is gonna have big shoes to fill, and he's gonna be a great guy, and I look forward to working for him. But Howard has so much more to give, and Dr. Ellison, when you go back and talk to all of the Kaiser bigwigs, it just makes sense that you eliminate that stupid rule. I will come and speak on your behalf. But ladies and gentlemen, today is so special that I wanted to bring Howard in, so not only those of you that don't know him would have an opportunity to meet him, but I would hope that each and every one of you that has a Kaiser facility in your district would make sure that you try to cultivate the same type of relationship with the medical directors there that I have cultivated with Howard, because you would be so amazed how many of our constituents are members and patients at Kaiser, and how accommodating Kaiser can be to the people that they service. So, before I bring Howard up to say a few words, I'd like to bring up the, another brilliant physician. You would have to be brilliant to be Howard's boss. And the only thing that's challenging for me is that I usually don't introduce tall people, but in this case, I will make an exception as I bring up Dr. Edward Ellison to say a few words. Let's give Dr. Edward Ellison a round of applause.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Honorable President, Members of the Los Angeles City Council. It is an absolute honor and privilege to be here to recognize my great friend, colleague, inspiration, Dr. Howard Fulman. You gave a beautiful address. It's hard to top, actually, what you described. You know, Mother Teresa said that if we don't know peace, it's because we've forgotten that we belong to each other. And Dr. Howard Fulman has never forgotten that we belong to each other, as a husband, as a father, as a son, as a friend, as a colleague, as a leader, as a physician, a healer, a mentor, a champion, using tools of intellect, vision, humor, a lot of humor, great, great, and enduring heart and awareness. He is committed to what Kaiser Permanente is committed to, is making lives better, and making lives better not just for our members, but for the communities that we serve. We have a deep and enduring passion for the belief that everyone deserves the right to achieve their best health and live their best life. And that is absolutely reflected in the way that Dr. Fulman has conducted himself in our medical group. He's an incredibly respected physician and clinician. He is wise. He has helped to guide us on our Board of Directors for 20 years. He has led our West Los Angeles Medical Center. He has helped to achieve investment in our communities that are so needed. He has a passion for assuring that all citizens, regardless of socioeconomic status or background, receive that best chance for their wellness, for their care, and for that chance to live their best life. That is exemplified by the creation of our South Los Angeles and Walden Hills Crenshaw Medical Office buildings, the dramatic reduction in healthcare disparities. It's a passion for Dr. Fulman and for our organization. He is all about excellence. You know, in medicine, we say first do no harm. It's all about safety. It's about high quality. Under Dr. Fulman's leadership in West Los Angeles, we have had among the safest, the longest string of days uninterrupted by untoward events for our members. It's about that safety culture, but everyone deserves the safest place to receive care. It's also about creating a culture and a community and a family so that everyone knows that they matter. Those who are all of us who deliver care, all of us matter, all members of the team. You talked about team and family. It's very much who we are. That's the type of culture that Dr. Fulman helps to create. I am impressed by the sensitivity with which the care is delivered. I had the privilege, after West Los Angeles began the transgender program, I was there meeting with several of our transgender patients, and they spoke to not just the technical excellence, but the sensitivity and the respect with which they were treated. And that's all due to the type of environment and the culture and the values Dr. Fulman helps to create. Our sickle cell program, our programs to help elevate the care for the different communities that we serve for, those from different backgrounds, for understanding what those disequities in care and helping to close those care gaps. His concern for the homeless and the uninsured. All of these things are reflected in just the way he lives his life and the passions that he brings. So, it is absolutely an honor and a privilege. It's been an honor and privilege to learn from him, to stand by him, to laugh with him as we go about doing this really important and noble work of service, of service to others. Muhammad Ali said that service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth, and that is absolutely true, and that is something that Dr. Fulman lives every day. So, on behalf of 7,000 Permanente physicians in Southern California and more than 80,000 members of our Kaiser Permanente family in Southern California, all of our hearts are with you, Howard, today, with deep respect, affection, appreciation for you and all that you have accomplished. Your legacy is deep and enduring, and we are so very, very grateful for you. Thank you for the opportunity to recognize Dr. Howard Fulman.
Dr. Fulman is, embodies what a family man is all about. He loved his father and respected him. He loves his mom, who is with us today. He's loved one woman his entire life, which is with us today, and on many occasions, on many occasions, Mr.--
Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, you're discussing this council meeting, sir.
And--
It's your only warning. Continue, Mr. Wesson, I'm sorry about that.
And you see the pride of a father in his eyes all of the time, as he would tell me stories about his son that went on to Yale and became an attorney, and his extremely tall son, that is, played volleyball at a very high level and traveled throughout this world. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to present to you my friend, and whenever I needed a doctor, my doctor, Dr. Howard Fulman.
Wow. Well, ladies and gentlemen, I have to say, this is a total thrill to be here today, and I'd like to say to both Herb Wesson and Ed Ellison, I couldn't have said it better myself. Thanks for the wonderful tribute. I do appreciate it. I don't take it for granted, and I'm really humbled and proud to be here today. I'm really proud of having played a role in helping to improve healthcare in the city of Los Angeles during a time where in healthcare there's been no controversy and no partisanship whatsoever. Not true. It's been a difficult period to be a medical director, to run a medical facility, to balance the needs of the individual with the financial realities, and to make sure that everybody, no matter who they are, has a fair chance of having high-quality care. I'm proud of the fact that I've played a role, as was described, in making sure that healthcare has been available to everybody, regardless of their socioeconomic status, and to play a role in reducing the scourge of disparities that exist between different ethnic groups, where some have better results and better care for no other reason other than their ethnicity. And at the time I've been the medical director at Kaiser West Los Angeles, I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to dramatically reduce those healthcare discrepancies and disparities across various ethnic lines. I'm proud of the fact that our organization, Kaiser Permanente, was willing to put its money where its mouth is and put beautiful and valuable and effective medical facilities in parts of town that are underserved and traditionally have not had access to that kind of care. And I'm proud that I played a role in that. I'm proud of the fact that I've had a role in making sure that we continue to have better and better excellence in healthcare in the city of Los Angeles, and particularly in areas where there are underserves. But it would be wrong of me to make it sound as though I did this by myself, because I didn't. We did this as a team of professionals, wonderful people in Kaiser Permanente, doctors, nurses, leaders, other professionals, staff members, who every day show up for one and only one reason, to make a difference for the patients that they serve, and giving the finest care and doing it in the most ethical manner possible and the most empathetic manner possible. I've had a lot of fun along the way, and the fun has largely been about being able to work with this fine group of professionals. And you see many of my colleagues actually standing behind me. These are the folks who really deserve the recognition and the credit for the fantastic results that we've been able to achieve. And I'd like to hear a round of applause from my colleagues in Kaiser Permanente who are sitting behind me. I do want to thank all of the elected officials that I've gotten to work with through the years. It's truly my pleasure working with many of the members of this council, with Mark Ridley Thomas, with the mayor, all of whom have been so cooperative and collaborative and care passionately for making a difference for their constituents. But I particularly want to credit today Council President Herb Wesson for his passion, his concern, his caring for the citizens of Los Angeles, and particularly the caring that he has for his constituents in making sure they get better healthcare, day after day, under his leadership. And I'd love to hear it for Council President Herb Wesson, please. So, I've been very fortunate to have a fantastic work family, and hopefully, many of you will get to meet members of our work family sitting in the audience, but I have been blessed to also have a fantastic personal family. And I could not have accomplished any of this without my personal family. I can't tell you what it takes to be the wife of a Permanente medical director. Being a Permanente medical director is not a nine-to-five job. It's not a nine-to-six job. It's not an eight-to-six job. It might be a seven-to-nine job. There's a lot of weekends. There's a lot of work in the evenings. There's a lot of phone calls, a lot of late meetings, a lot of caring for patients who have emergency needs. And through all of that, my fantastic and lovely wife, Sandra Kosikoff, has been such a fantastic partner for me to enable me to be able to do what I needed to do to make sure that we took great care of our patients. And I want to give credit and tribute to my wife, Sandra, who's right behind me. Express my love and appreciation for Sandra. Similarly, I would like to credit my two sons, the tall one, the volleyball player, who is the younger one, Casey. Casey is a fantastic 25-year-old, wonderful human being, who's a fantastic individual who cares passionately for people and has a successful career as an investment banker in his own right. And my other son, Alexander, who is a fantastic human being as well, with great, great principles and belief systems, and who is a lawyer now working in New York City. And I'd like to hear it from my two sons and my wife as well. And as Herb was nice enough to recognize, my father passed away last year. He was a citizen of Los Angeles, a very proud citizen of Los Angeles, who was an employer and had a payroll and cared passionately for his employees, and made sure that they were well taken care of during their period of employment. And he had an amazing personal touch and was proud to have a business-- And he had an amazing personal touch and was proud to have a business right here on Santee Street in Los Angeles for a number of years. And I also am here with my mother, behind me, Reme, Ricky, who is also a citizen of Los Angeles, and is maybe the most warm and sympathetic person I ever met in my entire life. And I owe a lot to my mother besides being here, but I owe my value system to my mother and my father, and I want to thank my mom very much, everything. Love you too. And similarly, my wife's family is here, and I'd like to thank them for their love and their support. And I think I'll close by saying that although I am retiring, and I don't know why we have retirement at 45-years-old in Kaiser Permanente, I don't know that, but I'm sure Dr. Ellison and others will take care of that. It is a bit antiquated, and we have been trying to fix that, Herb. But nonetheless, I'm going on to another interesting chapter in my life that I'm excited about, but I have thoroughly enjoyed the chapter I've had now. And the reason I have confidence in the future of health care in Los Angeles is because of the leaders and people who work at Kaiser Permanente and the great political and elected officials that we have as well in the city. So thanks to all of you for what you do as elected officials representing all of us as citizens, and thanks so much to all of our leaders in Kaiser Permanente, many of whom are standing behind me. Thank you very much for this wonderful honor. I greatly appreciate it.
So Howard, on behalf of all of the members of this council, we again thank you for your service, and I want to present you with this resolution on behalf of all of my colleagues. And Mr. Paul Corretts was the first member to sign it because his wife, Gail, ordered him to sign it first. So anyway, let's give Howard another round of applause.
And Mr. Weston, we have members on the queue. Mr. Corretts, followed by Mr. Harris Dawson.
Thank you, Madam President. And like Mr. Weston, I grew up with many visits to the Kaiser West LA Medical Center. I was a Kaiser baby and a very accident-prone teenager. So I could tell you how many times they took care of me, put me back together, maybe even saved my life once or twice. My favorite was fooling around with some friends that had just played football and practicing blocks and getting knocked through a glass window and going to Kaiser, having them stop all the bleeding and pull out all the glass. There's still a spot here where I -- But particularly, we had a chance to know Dr. Fulman well because Gail worked with him at Kaiser West LA. And I know she worked with him and looked up to him and recognized his great leadership and the amazing things that he did there and how caring he was for those in need. And so there's no other better way I can characterize him than immense, a good man who did great things his entire career. We're sorry that it's ending, but we know you'll go on to another chapter, but we are grateful for all the good that you did many years at Kaiser. So thank you so much.
Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Weston, for another amazing presentation. You're on a roll these last two weeks. We really, really appreciate it. And when I saw the certificate and the opportunity to sign it, it's frankly one of the prouder moments I've had here on City Council, Dr. Fulman, because you're such a giant and such an excellent example of what it means to be an Angelino, or the best of what it means to be an Angelino. I feel like I grew up at Sunset Kaiser. I had asthma really, really bad as a kid, so we were there all the time. And I remember as a child, my mother saying, "We have to stay at Kaiser because that's where they treat us right." That's where they don't treat us like we're a welfare case, or it's a charity, or they're doing us a favor to give us health care, that they treat us the same as they treat everybody else. And that lot that Council President spoke so eloquently about, I cannot express to you how important that lot is. My entire life, that lot has been vacant. There was one period where it was the biggest vacant lot in the city of Los Angeles. All through my childhood, I'd hear, you know, folks talk about, "Oh, this used to be such a great shopping place, and this Santa Barbara Plaza was such a wonderful place." And Supervisor Ridley Thomas, Council President Weston, Council Member Parks. But Kaiser, Kaiser stepped up and said, "We're going to do something, and we're going to do it at the highest level. So you're going to find things there that you don't find at other Kaisers. We're going to have the top of the line." I remember you describing it to me about three years out, and I was kind of like, "That sounds nice. We'll see if it actually happens." And sure enough, if you go there now, that lot is there. And this is not to mention the great facility that you put on Manchester and Danker, even south of that in South LA. Changes, I mean, not when you changed the lives of my wife and I. I mean, to trek over to Cadillac to get medicine and to park at Cadillac to get medicine was a thing. And now at Manchester, you drive up, you walk in, five minutes, you have your medicine, and that's more time you get with your family and get to do the things that are important. And so it's a big deal that you're here. I know Kaiser has principles, and they're written, and they're part of the ethics and part of the training of being in the organization, and that's very important, and it's laudable. But no organization can make those things real if they don't have real human beings to lead out in it that have those values as a part of who they are. And you're an amazing example of that. And so I'm happy to join with the rest of the council and the mayor in applauding you and the Kaiser organization today. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, I do too have a Kaiser story. I will always be indebted to our Kaiser family in Panorama City and particularly to Dr. Mark Hoffman. If you know him, you know he's a special man. I will never forget the incredible care my father had before he passed away. And I will forever be indebted to the Kaiser family for your excellent care. And thank you very much for always being there for my family, and congratulations on your retirement, sir.
Members, thank you very much.
Okay, members, let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration of the ordinances. Madam Clerk, let's bring up items number six and seven. Let's vote on reconsideration on item six and seven. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those items are now before us, members. Just go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move on to item number one. We have a few cards on this item. If I call your name, please come up to the podium. Ken Brands, are you here? Alan Travis? Jamie Boebe? Jamie, are you here? Okay, thank you. Yas Baravian? Yas, are you here? Do you want to come on up, please? Ken? Good morning. Are you speaking on item number one?
I am.
Okay, then you have one minute to speak on this item. Go ahead, sir.
Unfortunately, one minute is not enough, but bottom line in this case is the NoHo bid is represented in District Two, I believe. Your representative, Mr. Krikorian, is not here today for that reason, along with the other reason that we've been unable to secure information after four years of effort of who's in the bid, who votes in the bid, to contact those people. We'd like this matter continued. A third reason for the continuance, the request for continuance, is that I know only two people who were entitled to ballots. They did not receive ballots for this meeting. This bottom line is the NoHo bid is operated by a developer in North Hollywood, Bob Akavon, who single-handedly runs the NoHo bid.
Thank you, sir. Your minute is up. Thank you.
That's not really sufficient, unfortunately.
I understand. Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Alan. You're speaking on item number one as well?
Yes, I am. Thank you. First, we own property that's on Lancashire and Magnolia on the corner there, and the original petition that was sent out, I never received to sign. And to my knowledge, merchants' employees were asked to sign on these petitions. And for the petition to renew that was put out by the NoHo bid, I did receive this one. I didn't receive one by the city, which is the formal one, which I'd like to sign today to my objection. But also on the petition to renew, there's no opportunity to put no on it. It is only a yes vote, and I don't feel that's being fair and democratic. I also have concerns about the recent fire that was in North Hollywood on Lancashire Boulevard and the access in the alley due to the closure on the Lancashire side that I've asked Krikorian's office to have a review of that alley closure and would like it open.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Hello, thank you for your time. I am also representing a business owner in North Hollywood on the corner of Lancashire and Magnolia, and we also, as owners, did not sign the petition for the closure of the Lancashire Alley. It was signed not by owners, and so we were also concerned with the safety of the closure of the alley with the recent fires and the fire trucks not being able to get through and near the properties quick enough. In addition to the condition of the alley, the way it's being maintained, it's supposed to be for public use and to enrich the area, but if you look closely or see photos of the alley, you can see that it has not been well-maintained. And once again, as a business owner, we were not offered the opportunity to sign the petition and would love for the reopening of the alley to be reconsidered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Yas Baravarian. I'm an owner of a property located at Magnolia and Bachmann Boulevard. We bought the property about two years ago. We spent a lot of money fixing it up ourselves, repaving the parking lot and so on and so forth, and we are opposed to the bid because, one, I feel we've been doing a great job doing it ourselves. The profit isn't so large that it could afford extra taxes. I think that it would end up driving out tenants, and I think having empty properties or high turnover is a much worse result for the city. And I also think that with a five-year timeline and a bid, it's, one, a long time, not a lot of accountability, and even after those five years, it's going to go back to wherever it was that, you know, they sees the problem presently. So I just think property money, tenant money, business money is better spent handling it themselves in the most efficient manner. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Armando Herman. You're speaking on item one and your general public comment.
Well, look at the sponge cake now, everyone. Let me hold this up. See the sponge cake up there? We're here to petition in CD Two. Fuck Bob the developer because we demand a continuance. Why do you continue to push us out of our community and raise taxes when we do not accept any vote of a tabulation of ballots on this Wednesday of June 26, 2019? The objection of council to adopt this ordinance number 186096 for the record, fuck you, bullshit, and take this shit back to the bank. As you see, Mr. Dawson's here in my position, in my opinion, to vote yes. We demand a continuance and tell the -- Mr. Krikorian, get his dumb ass over here.
Get back on the item, Mr. Herman.
Now, as far as your general public comment, I find it intimidating that you send a jackass sergeant of arms during a presentation to threaten me while I'm sitting back there. And you, mommy, you called it out. Now, I don't know what your fucking problem is, other than you should eat more cake or shove cake in your mouth and shut the fuck up, but you need to stop the sergeant of arms of intimidation, threat, and retaliation, and better harassment. Because I don't like it when Mr. Dwarthi walks up behind me and startles me while I'm participating in your fucking bullshit Kaiser 666 meeting. So get your shit together and pull it all along. Nobody wants to smell the shit of LA because we have the Gators. So we're going to cheer, cheer, cheer. Let's go, Gators. Let's stick the Bears in the ass and hang them on a fort because we got more clout when we come to public meetings to shout, "Hoorah!"
Okay, that concludes speakers on item number one. Members, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, the next item we're going to hear is item 33, Mr. Ru.
Thank you, Madam President. And members, you know, regarding this item, the fatalities of pedestrian and cyclists on our roads remain far too high, and our road design play a key part in that grim reality. For too many people have been killed crossing our streets, and one of them was a young woman who was struck and killed by a vehicle while attempting to cross Rowena Avenue in 2013. Following the accident, the city reconfigured Rowena Avenue into two lanes, one traffic lane in each direction, along with the center lane and a bike lane on both sides of the street. I believe in solutions led by data and facts and safety improvements that directly respond to the kind of accidents we are seeing on different streets. But there is no doubt that the road diet on Rowena Avenue has made the streets safer for all road users. I also believe in community-led discussions, including the people's voice in these crucial decisions. Since this was not originally done in this case, I promised the community of Silverlake to conduct a fair study and to include the community on the traffic safety of Rowena Avenue and the surrounding streets. I am proud of the outreach and public discussions we had and grateful to the Silverlake community for being so engaged on this issue. Most of all, I am pleased that the study confirmed that the road diet has in fact made Rowena safer. But I think we could do even better. We can do more to protect our bike lanes, make pedestrian conditions safer, and improve safety for everyone on our streets. I therefore recommend that the city move forward with option one, to retain the current configuration of the one-traffic lane in each direction and upgrade the existing bike lane to accommodate a protected bike lane. So I would thank you, colleagues, and I urge an aye vote on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ru. Seeing no more speakers on this item, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, next item, item 34, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to ask for a technical amendment on 3B. It asks for a report back with recommendations in 60 days. I'd just like to make that 30 days.
60 days instead of 30?
30 days instead of 60.
30 days instead of 60, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin, for that technical amendment. We also have Mr. Sadio on the queue on this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate the amendments. I think we must move forward with all urgency to get all information that's vital to moving forward with this program. As you know, Madam Chair, I have asked to opt out of this program. I believe we're putting the cart before the horse. You know, one thing I love about this city is that when we do something, we're very deliberate. We're very thorough. So, for example, when we found that we had come to this critical moment, the tipping point on homelessness, we stepped back and we did this incredible study and really broke down and actually like published a book on homelessness in Los Angeles and then laid out a series of approaches. And we're in the process -- And we're in the process of executing those approaches right now. I would hope that we would do the same thing here. That we would study this before we implemented it. That we would know what are the elements and the factors that make this safe and not safe. How do helmets play a role in this? How do fines and tickets play a role in this? How do segregated corridors play a role in this? How do its own streets play a role in this? Is this a program that should be narrowly focused? But instead, what we've done is we've gone forward with a program for which we have none of that. And it's basically the Wild, Wild West. One day, all these scooters just showed up in my district. They have disrupted my district, a district of immigrants and seniors and children and new families, because there's no rules or regulations. And so, the seniors are very concerned about this. And communities like Chinatown or in the Westlake area, where we have incredible density and some of the most dangerous streets, all of a sudden, now we have this proliferation of scooters. We've had meetings and hearings. And our community, my community, has been very clear about that we are not prepared for this. And so, we are asking to be exempted from this. I think we're shooting before we aim. This is unlike the city. We're going forward with the program, but without the research, without the report backs, without the studies that are essential for something that inherently poses the type of public safety challenges that this program does. And so, I wanted to make sure that we brought this to your attention, brought this to the attention of the council. We will wait patiently for our motion to exempt us from this program. But I think it's important that the city appreciate the perspectives, at least in our part of the city, with respect to this program. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Mr. Bonin.
Uh, yes. Uh, I, there was, I agree with some of what Mr. Sadio said. And I, I take exception and offense to his characterization of the deliberations over this. We deliberated on this in the Transportation Committee, starting in October of 2017. And the, I'm looking through the council file now at repeated actions and deliberations. It's three screens worth of small print on my computer. At no point did CD1 come to testify on that. And I am reminded that we faced the same criticism of the mobility plan when we passed that. We didn't do enough outreach. And as I reminded the council at that time, we did a hell of a lot more hearings on the mobility plan than we did on the housing element. And we are, we are committed to continuing to study this and fix the problems with this, as the number of actions do today. But I, I take significant exception to the idea that this committee did not deliberate properly or thoroughly on this matter.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on this item? Mr. Rue.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to rise and I just wanted to really thank Councilmember Bonin and the Transportation Committee for, for moving this forward and working on this very important issue. And I just wanted to state for the record, you know, we are, this is an effort for us to try to prevent the Wild, Wild West from happening. The, these new technologies like dockless scooters and bikes are really coming at full steam. And we want to make sure that we try to get ahead of the curve, not behind it. And, and, and I really want to thank the Transportation Committee for bringing this forward. And there will be more enforcement mechanisms as well. And this is the, this is one of the crucial pieces that helps solve our first-and-last-mile problem. We talk about a multimodal system. We talk about helping traffic. We try to talk about creating a new Los Angeles. And this is one of those puzzle pieces that is necessary to make sure that happens. So I, I encourage an "aye" vote. And I want to thank the Transportation Committee for moving this forward. Thank you.
Mr. Rue, I see no other members on the queues. Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and move on to general public comment. If I call your name, can you please come up to the podium? Claudio Bovell, are you here? Stacy Slichta, Stacy, are you here? Want to come on up, please? Rachel, someone here, no last name, just Rachel. Can you please, is Rachel in the audience? Thank you. Can you please come on up? How about Mark? Okay, good afternoon, good morning, I should say. Um, do you want to go ahead? You have one minute of general public comment. Go ahead, sir.
I'm here to thank the councilmembers Mike Bonin, Gil Sadio, Andrew Westall, Mr. Ted Lou Congress, Mr. Eric Garcetti, and Mr. Paul Corretts for their effort in regards to the homeless situation and the high rent that causes the homeless situation. And each member that I mentioned, I have documentation in regards to their efforts. I have reached out to Marquise Dawson. I reached out to Kern Price. I reached out to Mr. Herb, Herb Weston. And I have information that I could, that I could assist you in regards to how we can try to help the homeless and stop some of this crisis that's happened in the city of Los Angeles. And those three councilmembers that I mentioned have not reached out to me. So I'm just one person trying to help the crisis that exists in the city of LA. Also, I reached out to Mark Really Thomas, we went to school together. He has not reached out to me. So thank you for the effort, the councilmembers that I mentioned. I really appreciate your help.
Thank you, sir.
And here's the documentation to prove that they have, their effort of what they have done.
Thank you. Next speaker. Stacy?
Hi, I have copies of packets for each of the councilmembers in reference.
Go ahead and hand them over to the sergeant.
Um, for each of the councilmembers in reference to what I'll be discussing, as well as Rochelle. Um, my name's Stacy Slichta, and I am a resident in Studio City. And I'm here to speak to you today about the 5G cellphone towers that are popping up throughout our community. Um, the councilmembers have talked today about getting ahead of the technology curve and doing your due diligence. Well, 5G cell towers really haven't hit the city council as far as doing their due diligence of what they're, what they're doing to our communities and what, what has been done in the past in other communities. For example, some, some towers have gone down in certain areas. And you'll see in your packet that we've given to you where seven schoolchildren in one school that had a 5G tower near them contracted the same type of cancer. Do you want that in your school, in your districts? Do you want that of your constituents? It's an election year coming up. And by the way, a lot of you did take money from these people that are putting up these 5G towers, these AT&amp;T towers. Do you want better campaigns and signs, or would you rather have children with cancer? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker. Are you Rachel? Good morning. Go ahead.
Hello, I live in Studio City. I am here to ask you to urge AT&amp;T and the city's street lighting department to relocate a 5G small-cell device that they placed on a light pole 200 feet from Moore Park Park, which has a toddler playground. It is also 70 feet from a child's home and 120 feet from my children and others. Neither the FCC, nor the EPA, FDA, nor the wireless companies, nor the city have conducted any health research on 5G radiation. We are a 5G test market, and we will not let them use our children as lab rats. This 5G device does not comply with the aesthetic and visual factors that AT&amp;T and the city agreed to. We can and should follow Mill Valley's emergency wireless ordinance that restricts 5G devices from residential districts. The CEO of Verizon even stated that these devices can work within 2,000 feet from 5G equipment. Studies show there is a large increase in cancer in those living within 350 feet of these devices. Thank you.
Next speaker. Um, can you give me just a second? Let me call a couple of more speakers. Zach Stresters, are you here? Zach? How about Zach Guerrero? Want to come on up? Felipe Ramos? Go ahead, sir.
Uh, how you do? My name is Mark Wilkins, and I'm with the ARMS of LA. Uh, it is important that we keep our community safe and keep our oil industry and employment opportunities strong. Uh, we believe that we can meet both goals without sacrificing one for another. We can drill safely and ensure oil regulations are implemented. Thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I agree. It feels like afternoon. It is still technically 11:30, so morning, so good morning, councilmen and women. Uh, once again, Zach with the ARMS organization. I want to thank you guys. It's, uh, it's always a pleasure to be in your presence. I want to let you know, ARMS has just recently opened up a brand-new youth boxing facility over on 14th Place in Griffith. So you'll hear us come up and advocate for jobs and economy often. But we're in a, a new campaign to also do great things for our youth. So we encourage you guys to come check it out, 1016 East 14th Place. Uh, as always, we do want to remind you, when any votes come up that have to do with industries such as oil and gas, 2,500-foot setback, we want to encourage you to consider the family-building careers that help to make things possible in our community, to provide the finances so we can have great events for our youth. So once again, thank you for your times. Uh, and ARMS really appreciates, appreciates the work of the councilmen and women here today.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Zach Guerrero. I'm also with ARMS. Um, ARMS works with at-risk youth and people struggling with homelessness and, and addiction such as myself. Uh, I'm here on behalf of ARMS. Um, workers who do not have a college degree have a hard time competing in today's economy. However, the oil industry gives hope to those without higher education degrees by offering living-ways jobs. The industry is also committed to hiring locally and in the communities that, that they operate in. Don't eliminate these good-paying jobs for local residents. I urge you to think about the men and women who are employed by the industry, the economic benefits that, that the industry provides to city and county, and remember how closely this industry is regulated in California. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Felipe Ramos. I just want to read, uh, we are, um, the, I don't have my glasses, my reading glasses. We are the midst of a housing affordability crisis at this time. We cannot afford to lose good-paying jobs and out more families in the pipeline or desperately needed affordable housing. Protect the community, keep the jobs here. Thank you very much. Have a good morning.
Thank you. Next speakers are Veronica Duran, are you here? Veronica, you want to come on up? Nora Sanchez? Brenda Valdivia? And Mike Greenspan?
Good morning, Ms. Martinez. Um, I'm a voice for homelessness. And the CEO, Andy Bales, runs two shelters. He runs the mission right here, located downtown in Hope Gardens in Silmar. Both of them are really bad shelters. And, um, he doesn't fix homelessness. Homeless girls fall in the cracks. What he does is transfer them from here to the one in the valley. And then, if they don't like it, they've just become homeless out there. I'm, I'm just became, um, with the whole child, which what they do is they work with us. So now, I just got to get a full-time job. And then, when I make my rent money, they give me the money to move in, and I'm back on my feet. I just got to find affordable housing. So the whole child really helps the homeless. Thank you. I hope somebody listens.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, I live at 1253 West Sunset Boulevard.
What is your name?
About to be evicted from there, from my, uh, building. Uh, I reached out to Mr. Councilman Sadio's office. Was supposed, Mr. Flores was supposed to help us, the tenants. We have not received any help from Housing Department. Third-party that is working in the relocation process for us, CPSI is called, is a third-party contracted by LA Housing Department, never help us. Uh, the other one would be Paragon. Okay, we have no help from anyone. Would you please help people? You don't like homeless? I don't like them neither. It's not, I don't like them. I don't like what they're doing to normal people. They're hitting people on the streets, you know, because they're frustrated. I'm getting on that point. I have a permanent job, thank God. But not everybody is so lucky as I am. So who is over you guys, so we can have some help? Don't send to my place, Mr. Flores, please. He is not helping at all. And you know what? Thank you for giving Kaiser people.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up. More than 30 minutes. Thank you.
Only one minute.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that, those are the rules, ma'am. We speak for one, one minute for general public comment. Thank you very much. And next speaker? Are you Brenda?
Yes. Uh, hi, my name is Brenda Valdivia. I live in District 1. I'm helping the tenants from 1255 West Sunset. We need more help. The Ricardo Flores is not helping. I need more affordable housing or information on that. Because the people have nowhere to go. And I think it's a shame that you guys get money for, um, building those big buildings. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Greenspan. Hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Yvonne Michelle Autry, are you here? You're next. Arnold Sachs and Chris Roth. Go ahead, Mike.
Mike Greenspan, a Florida Gator that kicks Bruin butt. There's this gangsta rap song. It starts out, "It's a good day. I woke up with your bitch, but I'm not going that direction. I want to look at the other side of the coin." It's not been a good year for Mayor Eric Garcetti. The first thing he did was drop out of the presidential primary. Then he negotiated an end to the well-publicized teacher's strike. And on June 4th, we had an election on the parcel tax. And guess what? The gadflies won the election. It looked like the Gators kicking some Bruin butt on that. Who knows what's going to happen next with Mayor Garcetti? He's just not on a good year. But what can I say? The gadflies won the election, so try another one, lose another. And as far as Mayor Garcetti, what'll happen next? Will Glenn Day leave him for Streff and Fable? Queen Drama in Hollywood? Let's kick some Bruin butt, if they want to play us.
Thank you. Michelle, followed by Arnold Sachs and Chris Roth.
Yes, uh, again, I'm, I support the ladies that were encouraging you to remove any devices that were exposing the populace to radiation. Uh, this is legalized environmental contamination, which is genocide. Uh, just for the record, I'm against Kaiser. That's in maintenance of the status quo because it is financing the pharmaceutical industry, just medicating, and now they're microchipping children. Uh, that's a complete farce. Again, that's in generation of more funds for you people and controlling the populace. Uh, I'd like to speak, I'm not a racist, but again, the low-level mafia that are entering this country, Mexican mafia, Mala Sabatruca, El Salvadoran, attack single black women. They attack Asian women. Many are maintenance men. I was exhibiting, you know, man, I had almost frontal exposure, full frontal, the other day. Stop letting them in, okay? Why don't you give jobs to black people? Black people were never given 40 acres and a mule reparations.
Can you please? Your time is up, thank you. Ms. Autry, your time is up, ma'am. You need to let Mr. Sachs speak. He's next. Can you please ask Ms. Autry to please take a seat? Thank you. Is Chris Roth here? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. For the record, Arnold Sachs. And I really, where is Herbie? Herbie's house? Herbie's not in. Herbie? Herbie? Come on out and play. I really like what you've done with your city council chambers. I like the rock garden you put in, especially around the horseshoe. I think if you painted it yellow, though, that would be a real start. Herbie, I hope you're paying attention. I also like the idea that, of all the motions that were ever passed around the council chambers, these rules were the only one you ever voted on, twice, to make them legal. Herbie, I think you should go into the doghouse. Herbie, come on out and play. Herbie? 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 The other part of that is, what was I going to say? Come on out and play, Herbie. I really like the rules. Two motions, two votes. It's illegal. Oh, Herbie!
Thank you very much, Mr. Sachs. Please take a seat. Next speaker, Chris, Chris Roth. And you're the last speaker in general public comment. Good morning.
Good morning, council. Uh, I just wanted to take a moment to remind everyone up here that there was a massive turnout a couple of months ago, standing up here in the council chamber, demanding action on the 2,500-foot public health setback on the 2,500-foot public health setback when it comes to all extraction within the city of Los Angeles. These oil wells, as highly regulated as the folks from ARMS are going to claim that they are, they're still dumping toxic pollutants into our communities and putting our, the lives of our children, their long-term health, at risk. It's poisoning families. There are wells all across the city, right next to schools, is utterly unacceptable. If there's one public health crisis related to, you know, the regulation of things that are being emitted into the area that you really need to be focusing on, it's that one. You need to be stopping the urban drilling within Los Angeles and don't listen to the, you know, the trying to paper over what it is that these companies are doing to our communities. The levels of cancer and long-term health impacts of communities that are standing next to these wells is incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, there's been a request to send item 40 forthwith. Okay, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? CNN, can we all please rise, including our members of the public, for adjourned motions? Are there any adjourned motions to my left? Okay, let's start with Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. Colleagues, today I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Lieutenant Colonel Bob Friend. He was one of the last surviving Tuskegee Airmen and was a proud supporter of the Woodland Hills U.S. Air Force Veterans Group, Wings Over Wendy's. He passed away on Friday at the age of 99. During his years of service in the Air Force, he defended the nation for 28 years, fighting in World War II, the Korean War, and the Vietnam War. As one of the last Tuskegee Airmen, Bob helped make history during a time of segregation and racism. During World War II, when African-Americans and many people of color were not afforded the same rights as their white counterparts to defend our country, the military only permitted white people to fly aircrafts up until 1939, when the NAACP stepped in and challenged those racist policies. And under the threat of litigation, the government started their first program to train African-American pilots at the Tuskegee Institute in Alabama, and Bob Friend was part of that program. He was widely considered a war hero. He flew 142 combat missions during World War II and he flew as part of the first African-American pilots. He was part of the Red Tails and he served as a wingman for the commander of the Tuskegee's, Benjamin O. Davis, the first African-American U.S. Air Force general in our history. And as a family man, his daughter Karen remembers her dad as a hero, who was always there for her at the end and she wanted, and all she wanted was to be there for him. Her father passed away surrounded by family and dear friends who will remember him as the national treasure that he was. He dedicated his life to service and will not only be remembered as a hero, but he'll be remembered for his infectious laughter, his positivity, and his ability to help others. Beyond his military service, he worked on space launch vehicles and served in foreign technology, as a foreign technology program director. For many years, he continued this work in space technology and even after retirement, he formed his own aerospace company. He will be missed and remembered by his friends, family, and all the veterans at Wings Over Wendy's who meet regularly and will miss his laughter. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Harris-Dawson?
I ask that we-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, before you start, Ms. Rodriguez?
My apologies, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Lieutenant Colonel Friend was actually, I got to celebrate his 99th birthday in my district at the Sunland Hanga Library. We had a wonderful turnout of folks that wanted to hear that continued history and make sure that it was shared and passed on to the next generation, so I would love to add myself to that adjourned motion. It was, we were so fortunate to have him with us to celebrate that 99th year and sad to hear his passing, but, but thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for-
Very well, thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Go ahead.
Okay, I ask that we adjourn very, very sadly in the memory of Mr. Leslie Andre Wakefield, Jr. This is yet another loss of a young African-American man at the hands of gun violence. Mr. Wakefield was 26 years old. In his short 26 years, he had become a prominent Grammy Award-winning music producer. He worked with many artists, including Cardi B, Tyga, and Chris Brown. On Friday, June 14th, he was murdered in a double-drive-by shooting on the 1900 block of 78th Street in my district, in the Manchester Square neighborhood. The shooting took place in front of his grandfather's home, where he had lived with his family for all of his life and his grandfather had been at that, has been at that home for over 50 years. Last week, our council president honored DJ Mustard and we had DJ Mustard here. DJ Official was one of the composers on two of DJ Mustard's albums, one called The Ghetto and the other one called 100 Bands. He also worked with the late, great Nipsey Hussle. He started his career in music by DJing parties with friends in high schools. After graduating high school in 2010, he began to work with a formal record company and later signed with Ten Summers Records, which is the record company owned by DJ Mustard. So many folks have spoken highly of him and it's been part of a very, very tough 2019 for us in South Los Angeles.
Thank you. Mr. Sidio? On my right, is there any adjourned motions? I have an adjourned motions, members.
Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Mary Virginia Orozco. Mary passed away on June 5th after a long fight with dementia and Alzheimer's. A daughter of Mexican immigrants, Mary was born in Whittier on September 24th, 1928. She was always passionate about education. When she was young, her father asked the landlord to get library cards for his children, since library cards were only given out to property owners at the time. She took that lesson too hard and always believed that education is the one thing that no one can ever take away from you. Mary faced many challenges as a woman of color in an extremely male-dominated profession, but that never stopped her drive to pursue her career as a lawyer. She graduated from Whittier High School at the top of her class in 1946 and began training as a legal secretary before graduating. She went on to graduate from the Los Angeles State College in 1958 with a degree in psychology and sociology while working to support her parents at the same time. She then enrolled in Loyola Law School and was the only woman in her graduating class in 1961 and the first Latina to graduate. After being admitted to the State Bar of California, Mary opened her own law office in Montebello, serving the Spanish-speaking community. She was surprised to learn that she was the first Latina licensed to practice law in California. Mary and her twin brother Hector later moved their offices to Atlantic Boulevard in East LA, where she developed an expertise for family law and trial work. Despite her considerable abilities as an attorney, Mary still faced discrimination in the workplace and in the courtroom. Once before, a case that she was arguing in criminal court, one of the bailiffs tried to take Mary to the courthouse jail, not believing that she was there to argue her own case. Her hard-working spirit never wavered in the face of this prejudice, embodying the strength of all immigrants in Los Angeles. Mary greatly served the Latino community of Los Angeles through her work. It was where that people in underserved communities could not find someone to represent them, who understood where they were coming from and actually spoke their language. Mary was a co-founder and officer of the Mexican-American Bar Association, the Latina Lawyers Association, and the Montebello East LA Bar Association. She also served as Governor Pat Brown's reelection committee and in numerous Los Angeles city and county commissions that she oversaw throughout her career. She is survived by her sister Emma, her brother William, eight nieces, four nephews, seven grandnieces and grandnieces. Last Friday on June 21st, there was a viewing that was held from 5 to 8 at Calvary Orchard Chapel, and she was laid to rest the next morning at Calvary Cemetery. Mary was a true inspiration to the Spanish-speaking immigrant communities in Los Angeles. May her memory forever be a blessing. Thank you.
And our meeting is adjourned.